What do you think is right?
Um, what they made. We could have a meeting and run it.
I thought I had to, you know, I was very, very long set in thirty seconds. So I don't know if you can. But, um.
But whatever you think is appropriate. No, I'm fine. Okay. Everything is good. There's a lot of time. It's good. It's a great situation. It's good to have, uh, we have a different plan.
Oh. I'm getting real involved. No, you're right. I just moved you over one. That's usually on me. I forced me. Never, never, no. Never. Yeah. I was like, oh, my God. Yeah. I was like, oh, my God. Yeah. I was like, oh, my God. Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. You doing good? Good to see you. Good to see you. Nice to be here.
My time.
Yeah. Yeah. We got the driven. We got the work. We got the work. Thanks again. Thanks for everybody, man. That was fun. You got a good crew.
Really appreciate you.
We had to move y'all down. I know.
How are you?
I'm doing great. Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Roll. Yeah, yeah. I told you. Thanks again. Thanks for everybody, man. That was fun. That was fun. You got a good crew.
Really appreciate you.
We had to move y'all down. I know.
How are you?
I'm doing great. Thank you.
Nice to see you.
He said he drove. Right there. Right there. Yeah. I told you. 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 Yes, we do. Yes. Sounds good.
No, Diane. You did. I moved you down. I'm gonna, and you're gonna, I told Diane how to do this. She's gonna, she'll help her. And I told her that when she wants to speak, she used to turn it on and I could see.
Let you know.
Ladies and gentlemen, if I may have your attention, please. Ladies and gentlemen, if I may have your attention, please. I would like to call to order the regular board meeting of the Tarrant County College Board of Trustees for August 18th, and welcome all of you here. Are there any public comments, Mr. Gates? Thank you. We have a very special occasion tonight, the swearing-in of our new trustee, Dr. Diane Patrick, and to do the honors is the Honorable Mayor of Arlington, Jeff Williams.
Well, I am honored to be here, and I need to first say thank you to Tarrant County College for all you mean to our community and throughout Tarrant County, and it's amazing the foundation of education that you have established and what a difference you're making. And I want to commend you on such a great choice, therefore replacing a very good trustee in Ms. Vandergriff, and of course, you know, Diane Patrick has been the epitome and in fact, the symbolic standard that we know of education because she has stood for it from day one. She is also not only a great proponent and champion for education, she is an expert in education, and she is also one who knows how to work partnerships to really leverage our dollars and our resources to make something successful. So with that, I won't go on and on, Mr. Carter, like a lot of politicians will. I will stop right there, but this is a real honor because Diane Patrick is very deserving of this, and she's going to be joining a great group of people here, making a difference here for our youth and our adults. Thank you. Diane.
Diane, if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Diane Porter-Patrick. I, Diane Porter-Patrick.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I have not directly.
That I have not directly.
Or indirectly paid.
Or indirectly paid.
Offered, promised to pay.
Offered or promised to pay.
Contributed.
Contributed.
Or promised to contribute any money.
Or promised to contribute any money.
Or thing of value.
Or thing of value.
Or promised any public office or employment for the giving.
Or promised any public office for the giving.
Or withholding of a vote.
Or withholding of a vote.
At the election.
At the election.
At which I was appointed.
At which I was appointed.
Or as a reward to secure.
Or as a reward to secure.
My appointment or confirmation.
My appointment or confirmation.
Whichever the case may be.
Whichever the case may be.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Now, trustee oath of office. I, Diane Porter-Patrick.
I, Diane Porter-Patrick.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of college trustee.
Of college trustee.
For Tarrant County College of the State of Texas.
For Tarrant County College of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States and of this state.
Of the United States and of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Awesome. You did great.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much, Mayor Williams, for taking the time to be here to make this swearing-in ceremony very special, not only for me but for all of us, the City of Arlington and the County of Tarrant. It really means a lot. He is a mayor with great vision, and we really appreciate your leadership in Arlington. Thank you again. And thank you to the Board of Trustees for being so willing to appoint me. I have to say, though, it's really big shoes to fill, and I want to take this opportunity to ask former trustee Kristen Vandergriff to please stand and let us publicly thank you, Kristen, for 14 years. Thank you, Kristen, for 14 years of Tarrant County College Board service. We really, in Arlington, have been very blessed to have your leadership and your direction when it comes to making things happen in the community college arena, and again, my heartfelt thanks, and I'll be calling on you. Thank you so much. And congratulations to this board for having selected the new chancellor, Ernest Giovinini, and I'm going to call him Dr. G. I already told you that, but when you think about how exciting the future is, what lies ahead? When you think about that Tarrant County College is, what I like to say, where it's happening, and I received, as many of you may have in the mail, the semi-annual magazine, The Tarrant County College Reach, and what caught my attention, it says, "Welcome to the Future." And I believe that Tarrant County College is the future of not only this area, but the region, the state, and the nation, when you think about the contributions that are to follow. And I'm looking forward to working with each of you as a team as we work to ensure seamless transitions. We want to have the students able to matriculate from the K-12 arena, high school, to a community college, or a four-year institution, or from a two-year institution to a four-year institution, but most importantly, to the workplace. Career-ready. And I would like to take this opportunity to recognize UTA President Vistoff Kabari, who has been a leader in these types of initiatives. Dr. Kabari, would you please stand and be recognized President of UT Arlington? And let's work together to improve access and opportunity for more of our young people who are going to be attending early college high schools and taking dual credit courses because we have over 7,000 of our 51,000 students taking these courses, and that is changing lives. And I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize the new College of Education Dean at UTA, Dr. Teresa Doty. If you would please stand up so we can welcome you. She's been with us two and a half weeks. Welcome. And also the Associate Dean for Educator Preparation at UT Arlington, Dr. John Smith. Thank you for being here. It just goes to say how much they believe in what TCC is doing and what the great partnerships and collaboration will produce for our students. And I look forward to working with you to expand workforce development and career and technology partnerships to improve college readiness through STEM initiatives. I'd like to recognize Mr. John Hibbs. If you would please stand. He is representing the Arlington School Board, who have been very involved. They have been very, very involved and are currently building a fabulous new career and technology center that will be collaboratively managed with TCC. It's just so exciting. It's just so exciting, and John is a member of the Arlington School Board. The rest of them are at their regularly scheduled school board meeting, but they send their love. And I look forward to working with you to change remediation approaches. We think about the developmental courses, and we know that this is not working, and we've got to, we've got to figure out another pathway. And when I think about ways that we can do that, I think about the State Board of Education and the role that they play in all of that work with developmental and remediation. I'd like to recognize the State Board of Education, Regional 11, School Board Member, Pat Hardy. Would you please stand, Pat? And I look forward to working with you to expand distance education. That's what our customers are demanding. We have to listen to our customers. I look forward to working with you to develop private-public partnerships, student housing, for example, internships, et cetera. And I also think it's especially exciting to think about the possibilities of research at the community college level. We know about the great research that takes place, takes place at our University of Texas at Arlington and other four years, but the research that's being done through the two years is kind of a well-kept secret right now, so we need to get that out there, the synergy that can be created by these partnerships when it comes to programs, when it comes to research, is something that will be greater than all of us. So again, I thank you, and yes, we know that TCC stands for the Community's College. Let's keep it that way. And again, I want to say that we have a lot of TCC supporters in Arlington where I live, and I also be representing part of ULS, and I know that we have several who are here this evening who are big TCC supporters, so I'd like to ask others in the audience that I have not recognized to please stand up so we can thank you for your support of TCC. Anyone else? All right. We got it. We covered it. Very good. Again, thank you so much. Look forward to working with each and every one of you. Thank you very much. Okay. Dr. Patrick, if you will come take your seat, and we have a name plate for you, and we welcome all of our special guests. We're so honored that you came to share this evening with us. We are about to go into the public hearing on our 2016-17 budget. You are welcome to stay as taxpayers who participate in this budget. You are, we will give you two or three minutes to also leave and return to your places. And I would like to, there's another Dr. Patrick in the room. He's getting up and fleeing to the back, and we were glad to have him, too. You going to lead this effort? Or just ask if there's anyone who wants to come in? If there is. Absolutely. Teresa's going to help you with. I mentioned that there were some other friends of TCC here, and I don't know if I just didn't see him or if he just sneaked in, but I'd like to recognize Neil Adams from HEB because he's a big TCC supporter. Neil, thank you for being here this evening. Neil, Neil has, we are indebted to Neil for lots of good counsel and friendship over the years, and we're glad to have you with us. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak to the proposed budget, which has been part of the public forum for several weeks now? Then we will proceed with the board action items, and I would ask approval of the minutes of the meetings of July 21st, 2014, and August 4th, 2014.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Ayala, seconded by Mr. Heed. Any questions, comments, corrections? All those in favor, aye. Motion passes. The consent agenda, six items, motion to approve, any to be removed? Mr. Heed moves to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Greenhill. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Dr. Patrick?
Yes, I needed to ask.
There are any items that pertain to UT Arlington that would preclude my voting on consent agenda? No. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Committee reports, audit and finance, Mr. Carter.
Now, the audit committee did meet, created a plan for the upcoming year. We also reviewed the aviation audit. You may recall that there were some discrepancies in the difference between VA funding requirements and our billing and so forth. We have rectified most of that and corrected those errors. I think we've, we're almost to the point where we're sort of break even on it. And then I will give all of you a sheet. I think we've made copies of it, of the budget or the audit plan for this upcoming year. They include audits of the dual credit. You may recall that almost any time we make a major change in a program, as we have done with dual credit, we perform an audit. We will be auditing the tuition. We will be auditing the tradesman international contract, the Alucion contract, and as is required by the state, the board of trustee expenses, and that would be it.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah. This, the plan of action for the year requires the approval of the trustees, so I'd entertain a motion to approve this audit plan for fiscal 2017.
Okay. The motion can come from you, and since it's from committee.
I'd like to make that motion then, please.
It doesn't require a second. Is there, are there any questions or discussion about the motion to approve the year's plan for audit? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
This will be posted on the website, so none of it's a secret. There you go.
I'd like to make a comment on this. There's a matrix that we have. The, our internal auditor looks at our various operations and there's a determination of what the greatest risks are. These are not particularly things that we're pointing at, it's just that these are the things that we believe are the greatest risks in regard to our correct operations.
Thank you. The Governance Committee did meet to approve the agenda, and we are going to recommend the creation of a new committee called Community Outreach, and I would ask Mr. Heed to make that motion on behalf of the committee.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we create a new committee for the college. The name may have changed, but we'll call it the Outreach Committee. The purpose of that would be to have a proactive committee to reach out to the community and promote all things TCC and community colleges, including upcoming legislation and legislative priorities as set by the CAT and the President's Organization.
The motion is from committee, doesn't require a second. Any questions or comments? CAT is the Community College Association of Trustees.
Texas Trustees.
Texas Trustees, which we are a member of. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, I would like to offer, and Shelley's going to put on the screen, the, these committee assignments, and ask a motion to approve when I finish. The Audit Finance Committee, Mr. O.K. Carter is chair, Teresa Ayala, Mr. Greenhill. The Governance Committee, Louise Appleman is chair, Mr. Heed and Mr. Carter members as vice president and secretary. Institutional Planning Committee, Mr. Heed is chair, Mr. Greenhill, Dr. Morrison, she deserves an O.N. at the end of her name. Community Outreach, I've asked Dr. Patrick to chair and Ms. Ayala and Mr. Heed to serve, but ultimately, we will involve the entire board on this committee when we go visit your particular areas of the county, so I would entertain a motion to approve these committee assignments for the coming year.
Move to approve.
Mr. Heed, seconded by Mr. Carter. Any questions or comments?
My comment is that although we are elected by a district, we serve the county, and so I would like to ask that as you seek engagements from people for various issues, you don't limit it to our assigned districts because we all have friends all over the county and the state.
Absolutely. And once, this committee has not been chartered or organized or planned out, and I feel sure they will do that posthaste and will lay out a plan of action, and I would hope that each of you would volunteer to participate where you wish.
And Shelley, did you get that correction on my name?
She will.
Thank you.
I even approved the list, and I missed it, so my fault. All right. We have a motion to approve in a second. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda, item number 10, is the consideration and approval of the investment policy. Dr. McLendon and Ms. Robinson.
Good evening, Madam Chancellor and Madam Chairman. Is, I recommend that the TCC board approve the investment policy.
And this has been received by the board prior to the meeting and reviewed, so is there a motion to approve the investment policy?
No move.
Is that Mr. Carter?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, Mr. Heed. Questions, discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. McLendon, Dr. McLendon. Item number 11, consideration and approval of Texas Procurement and Support Services statewide managed term contract 885-M1 agreement with Chemical, Inc. to provide water treatment chemicals and services for use district-wide in the amount of $219,500. Ms. Petty?
Good evening, Chancellor, President, and Board of Trustees. The first three items that you have are items that you might recall from previous years that we get this time of year that we do annual renewals of these. And this first one is regarding chemicals for district-wide. And this is an estimate that we do for this predicting from what we've done in previous years and what we assume we're going to do next year. It is for fountain, fountain features around the district, cooling systems. No swimming pools, but it's the chemicals that we really need. We hope that you will approve the amount of $219,500. If you have any questions, and since we do have a new trustee, there, each of the items come with a summary that hopefully you have in advance that gives a little bit of detail of information that you'll have to read in advance, and then any questions that you might have on the details of this.
She and I waded through the Four Inch Oak look yesterday.
Great.
She has it online as well.
And this is a statewide, we use this off a statewide contract for this particular item.
I have a comment.
Let me get a motion on the table, please. Okay, Dr. Morrison, second.
Second.
Mr. Heed, go ahead.
So my comment is in view of the recent media coverage of the lead found in Fort Worth ISD water fountains. Would you ask your staff, perhaps you've already done it, but to make an assessment of our campuses so that we can publicly say that we have not found such incidents?
Yes, ma'am, we certainly will. And the chemicals, just let me clarify, so the chemicals for this are, have nothing to do with our water fountains. But I hear you loud and clear, and we're working very closely with our risk management group under Angela Robinson's team to assess what's going on there to keep us safe. So thank you for the comment.
So that's a commitment that you'll actually make that assessment.
It's an absolute commitment. You bet. We are in the process of making that assessment now.
Make that report. I was asked that question, and so I'm putting it in your lap, so you'll take care of it.
Yes, and I would, I would assume that risk management probably will be the ones that might come back and provide that report to you.
Yes, we've already in the process of doing that.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Patrick?
As we move into these agenda items, I wanted to ask if any of these items pertain to UT Arlington that would preclude my voting as a conflict of interest.
I, sorry, I reviewed the agenda from that perspective, and there are none.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion on the floor and a second to approve item number 11 in the amount of $219,500 for water treatment. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 12, consideration and approval of inter-local agreement with Tarrant County to purchase unleaded and diesel fuel from Martin Eagle Oil Company in the amount of $296,000. Motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second, Mr. Greenhill. Ms. Petty, do you want to expound on this?
Unless there's any specific questions, this is again one of our annual contracts that we do to provide fuel for our 207 vehicles in our fleet. And we do this every year, and we have a lot of fleet that we have to keep fueled up, so.
Questions, comments? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 13, consideration and approval of educational and institutional cooperative agreement with Trimco/Weatherproofing Technologies to provide managed asset roofing program for Tarrant County College District in the amount of $129,473.92. Motion to approve?
So move.
Mr. Greenhill.
Second.
Seconded, Mr. Carter. Ms. Petty?
Same. This is an annual agreement. This is for maintenance of our roofs. So during the year, if we have any emergency leaks, we have a 1-800 number, we can call immediate response to us per this contract, and it has worked out very well in the past for us and kept us dry, some of our old roofs.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 14, consideration and approval of job order contracting general contractor services agreement with Novu Construction and Technology Services for construction services to install classroom Code Blue system equipment on the southeast campus in the amount of Motion to approve?
So move.
Mr. Greenhill.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Heed. Ms. Petty?
Unless there's any specific questions that I haven't answered? Okay.
You recall last month, we bought the phones. This is the first campus to be installed.
That's right. This is installation, so we do have the phones, and there's 950 phones that we're in the process of installing.
Total camp, district-wide?
District.
950 across the district.
District-wide, and this is the first campus.
Would you anticipate that the amount per campus would be about the same, or does, is Dr. Capone's the most expensive?
Hope you might know that. I've been predicting that it's about the same amount per campus. David, is that right? About the same amount per campus?
It varies on a campus-by-campus basis. In the past, it was about 150 per campus. When we did some of our initial surveys, it's gone up. The number of rooms, how we utilize smaller rooms, and we're getting down to 15, 20-room type occupancy classrooms. So if this provides that kind of service, it'll.
So, any other, Ms. Ayala?
I do have one other question. Is this? I don't know, I'm not turning on. Is this in any way help us in our premiums with insurance at all with the fact that we have this?
I'd have to defer to Chancellor Robinson to answer that question.
And I don't know the answer, but I can find out for you.
Okay, thank you.
So, for the benefit of some, could you just give a two-sentence explanation of what the Code Blue system is for the classrooms?
And again, probably Chancellor Robinson can answer it better in terms of how the system, what the system is going to do to protect us, or just facilitate it. But one thing I do know about it is that the police can listen into any classroom. So I know there was some concern that, you know, everybody's got cell phones these days, and so, you know, people can call 911, but actually, I think the police on this system can actually listen in to the classroom. And Angela, unless you have somebody that might be able to.
Chief Williams? You back there?
Yes.
Do you want to speak to that?
Yes, ma'am. Under this particular system, the, once someone activates the Code Blue phone, we'll actually be able to hear what's going on within the classroom instead of having someone call 8911, having to call them back. We can, in real time, we can hear exactly what's going on in the classroom, whether there's a fight or a heavy discussion or some other type of critical incident we need to respond to.
Where exactly will the phone be located? On the professor's desk, or the door, or do you?
I'm not sure exactly.
On the wall?
And how, how will it be activated?
Just like a push button. We just push the one button, it'll ring directly into the dispatch center.
Who pushes the button?
Whether it's a student, whether it's a professor, anyone, anyone can activate the button.
Okay.
And it goes directly to our dispatch center.
Okay.
And currently, we have the phones all over the district outside.
Yes, outside already.
In the hallways.
Addition of this is in the classroom, so we have the phones all over. You'll probably see them, they have the blue light, and you can just go up and activate them. This is putting them, installing them in all the classrooms, and again, so that if somebody's too scared or whatever, can't manipulate their cellphone, they can be able to hit this on the wall, and these guys can hear everything that's going on in the room without, to have to have a two-way discussion. It's almost like an intercom to you guys.
Yes.
Can it also be activated by, by the police? In other words, if somebody's walking by the classroom and they hear a big commotion, that they could?
I would have to check on that. I'm not exactly sure how the system will work, whether or not we can activate it. We can't?
Yeah, good, okay.
He means can they do it without it being?
So it could be activated at the police department's initiative, at their, at their site. David, you need to come to the mic. If someone, perhaps in the hallway, that's what you're saying. If someone's in the hallway and hears something going on, but there's not been an alarm, that person could maybe go to the hallway alarm or their cellphone, and then Chief Williams and his people could listen in.
Essentially, the phone is a monitored system. It gets reports back through a computerized interface, and the police have the ability at their dispatch area to call back into any phone when we install it. That was part of the parameters that we did. Code Blue is just a generic name. It happens to be the leading, it's kind of like Xerox machine. Code Blue, Xerox, they're sort of synonymous with the product. And we did an evaluation of about four different companies. We did this about 10 years ago, and they were by far the clear winner, higher quality than anything else out there. So, thank you.
And Chancellor Robinson, you might want to speak to the fact that we have a committee working on a variety of security issues in preparation for the new law which will affect us next year.
We actually have a campus carry committee that's working on those issues, so.
We have a year's reprieve from the university, so it gives us some time to get our ducks in a row, hopefully. All right, we have a motion on the floor with a second.
I do have one other question, if you don't mind.
I'm sorry, thank you, yes.
Also here.
Okay.
Because of the, Nina, because of the cost, that it's, what it's costing us per installation per phone, have we looked at any areas that we could potentially leverage any sort of the labor right now so that maybe we can cut some costs on some of these other installations? Is there anywhere, any room at all for leverageability of any, anything at this point to, so when we start doing these at the different campuses, just because it's, it's quite a bit, and I know it's important, but it's, it's a lot of money per install.
We work very closely with procurement, so I'd probably defer that to Mike Herndon, who's over procurement, who really sets the standard on how we have to procure the services for everything we do. If there's any specific things, I know our team, because we have this internal planning team that really works very hard to plan these, the design of them, and works very closely with procurement to ensure that we're looking at all those kinds of things, because I know you've brought that question up, and how are we leveraging and the ability to do all these jobs, and because they know more jobs are coming down the line.
Right.
But again, those standards are set, and here is Mike to fill you in.
Excuse me.
Thank you.
The best way would be with volume, and the best way to do that would consider moving forward, rather than doing campus by campus, doing one large bid to do the complete thing, and that should get you some economies of scale. How much is hard to say at this point.
Okay, if we can look at that, that would be great. Thank you so much. Thanks. Other comments or questions? Ms. Carter?
Since I was opposed to this in the beginning, I think it would be inappropriate to vote for continuation now, but just one more time, I'd like to point out that if you have a classroom with 36 people, there are 36 cell phones in there, and probably have a couple of people with extras. I just don't think this is a necessary expense. I know at this point, we're committed to it, but it just, in my view, we'll look back on 10 years and wish we had a million and a half bucks back, so.
Mr. E.
I'd like to also make the comment that this is just one tool, our arsenal, and it's critical, essential, that we be prepared for any kind of emergency on campus, and, you know, we went down to Austin, we, San Antonio, and heard some input. We had a lady come here from, I can't pronounce the name of the college, whatever. And I would hope that we're relooking at our security system, our response system under risk assessment, and eventually, the board will get a presentation on, on what we're doing.
Yes, they will.
Okay.
When the campus carry finalizes their recommendations, that will come to the board.
Okay, thank you.
And that, again, is a cross-functional team and, like, facilities involved, there's a lot of cross-functional departments all across the district on how we all work together more collaboratively during a kind of a crisis situation, which I think has been really good under Angela's leadership to pull that all together, because we're learning, we're all learning a lot about it.
And not only in the district, but, but also with every, all the agencies outside of our district that might be involved whenever we have a situation. Because it's not a question of if it's going to happen, it's almost like when.
That's right.
Yeah, I'm telling you.
Other comments? Motion on the floor with a second. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Carter, one negative vote. Item number 15, consideration and approval of contract with Decker Mechanical for installation of chiller, cooling tower, and boiler for the Irma Johnson Hadley Center of Excellence for Aviation, Transportation, and Logistics in the amount of $616,024. Motion to approve?
I'll move to approve with the, the note that we thoroughly discussed this in the governance.
Second. Seconded by Dr. Morrison. Comments, questions? Ms. Petty?
I might just point out to Dr. Patrick that under these mechanical, electrical plumbing projects, for the most part, we have what you see in the back of your package, which is a phasing program, so you'll see that the board has already approved the design, the purchase, and now this is the installation. So it gives you a little bit of a budget and shares with you a little bit of the background. And again, we had that bucket of paint to work on this building some years ago when we got it, and of course, we have continued to have some issues here and there, and this is one of them, and it's been a little problematic with that building just to keep it cooled, and so this is an expensive.
Did we know about this issue when we bought the building? We bought the building, and now we have $616,000.
You know, when you're operating a 160,000-square-foot building, we kind of went in with the shoestring with that $4 million, and what we sent was paint, but there's a lot of people in the building, we're using it a completely different way, and we knew that there was going to be issues down the line. And in fact, we didn't use the whole $4 million when we, the initial, but over time, we've moved another department in there on the third floor, and so, yes.
Okay.
Picking of those other floors, there's, some of it's not being used, is, are we going to have the capacity to not cool and heat those areas that are not being used?
In all our facilities, we do that. We're, we're able to shut down certain areas, bring them online and offline, but right now, currently, all three of those floors are in use in that building.
Fully used?
No, the third floor is only partially used. And that's a pretty open floor, those are open floor plans, so we do the best we can in terms of just being able to regulate it.
We're heating and cooling it all.
We are heating and cooling it all.
Other questions and comments? All those in favor of item number 15, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 16, consideration and approval of contract with Texas Contracting for materials and installation of water distribution system upgrades on northeast campus in the amount of $4,182,700. Motion to approve? So move. Dr. Morrison, seconded by Mr. Carter. Ms. Petty?
I just hope Dr. Gobin loves us as much as he loves us today after we're through with the work, because this is a big endeavor. If you remember, some years ago, we did this at the south campus, and it's a challenge doing a project like this at a, at a college, because there's a lot of disruption that we have to, to manage in, in putting in a system like this. But it is really important. We have breaks that we have to deal with. We had one last Thursday that I sent Chancellor Robinson a picture of, and so we're eager to get this pipe out of the ground and replace with this plastic good pipe, and I think it will go for years to come. So anyway, we're all going to work together to make the transition on this important project, unless there's any specific questions.
Do we have other campuses that have similar problems now, or, you said you've just redone one?
South, well, you know, in order of kind of age, south, we took care of a lot of these kind of similar issues at the south campus, northeast being the next one, kind of in line for a lot of the infrastructure. So a lot of the infrastructure projects, the major projects you're going to see now and here on out is going to be at northeast, getting that campus ready for the visual and performing arts, and this is an important one. I'd have to defer to David, whether we think we're going to have to do this at northwest or south. Southeast.
Poor David. You better stay in this corner. Do you have to go under buildings, or?
Northeast campus, there, we have rerouted a line that was going over under a building because it was impossible to get to it, and we rearranged and cut costs. Now, as far as northwest campus, we're getting ready to do some evaluations on utility systems at northwest campus, built in '74. We know there's a few issues with water. We've had a lot of issues with sanitary sewer on that campus, and we're looking at some efficiencies on the purchasing of power. There's six different utility feeds on electric alone on that campus, and you just don't normally do that for that size of campus, so.
This could be construed as a political statement, but would it be useful to your department to have a systematic study of all of our campuses in regard to infrastructure issues?
We have. This is the man that has done it.
Well, Mr. Greenhill, we really have done a look at it.
You've done that, well, that's good to know.
At most all of the campus, that is correct. And we've been working with some engineering firms in town to overview all these assessments and get pricing as some plans we're bringing forward in the future.
Okey dokey.
We have a very comprehensive, what I would say is a three to seven year plan for all, uh, our infrastructure and we are ready to talk about it.
Seven years? Okay.
Probably over the next, it could even be.
Really depends on funding.
Depends on funding.
It's a funding.
Yes.
It's a funding and it's the ability to be able to manage that work at all the campuses.
Yes, okay. And, and more discussion on that in the future.
Absolutely. Love to hear it.
I had one short item I'd like to add to Mr., for Mr. Carter. On the Code Blue phones, we don't, we actually identify the classroom number comes up on a pop-up screen for dispatch. So when they get a call, they know instantly. Cell phones are a good form, but the problem with the cellphone, there's yet to be an agreement on how you do location for 911. So if there's a 911 call on a cellphone, it goes to a, the city. And then it takes, it can take five, 10 minutes till it routes back to our police. And we, we are the responders on our campus. So we did look at a lot of these issues and I know it's expensive, but that's the only way you really get it internally, short response to our emergency responders.
Yeah, it would be hoped that neither one of us would, uh, would be proven, uh, right or wrong and that it won't be necessary.
Sure.
But I, I, I do agree with Mr. Heed that, uh, we will have issues.
Right.
On campuses and in classrooms, yeah.
And the other thing regarding this item, uh, you did mention that you, you did take in consideration uh, the expansion that will be needed for the Center of Excellence.
Absolutely. We looked at all of the various facility plans that have occurred. We made sure that we had the capability to serve all sites on every campus we've touched. The medium voltage job we, you passed recently and the same thing with the water. The only thing that there might be changes, if there's a change in location significantly, which I don't think there will be, but if there's a significant, it could add to that lateral going to that site. But we have full capacity for fire suppression and all the above on the campus.
Thank you.
So basically, this, this distribution line takes it up to about five feet outside the building?
Each building.
Each building.
And, and if you, if you saw on the summary there, there's going to be a connection piece, which is a plumbing job that takes the last five feet into each of the facilities. And, and that has to be done very carefully phased because water sitting in a pipe gets old. It, it actually, there's a whole new-ish set of issues with that. So we'll do a very carefully phased attachment scheme so that we keep good, clean, fresh water in the lines at each building.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you thought homeownership was tough. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of item number 16, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 17, consideration and approval of contract with Muckleroy and Falls for construction services for exterior stair tower at Trinity River Campus West Fork Tower in the amount of $2,491,503.27. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Greenhill, seconded.
Seconded.
Dr. Morrison, Ms. Petty?
Since this is such a pricey, uh, item, I might just take a minute to visit with you about this. Because I think when people think of staircases, they think, wow, how can you spend two and a half million dollars on a little staircase? This staircase, uh, when we redid the, the East Fork Tower, we, uh, built out a staircase internally in that building to accommodate the different loads that you have because the building was built for an office use. So as an educational use, we have more people and we have, um, code requirements that, that cause you to have, to be able to have a staircase that can get more people in and out of it. So we built a staircase internally in that tower, which took away from valuable square footage. So in this case, what we decided, and it was expensive. So, um, it wasn't, it wasn't expensive to do it internally in a building. You had to cut concrete and do it right smack in the middle of the building. In this tower, what, what our great planning team that we have internally came up with was putting on an exterior staircase, which doesn't take away from valuable square footage in that tower. But to do so, it's a six-story, um, uh, staircase. And if you've looked at those buildings, there are staircases, but they blend in, so you really can't tell. But it will match exactly the architecture of that building and it'd be on the exterior. But it's six stories, it's aluminum and glass to match, so there's some architectural issues. It's having to be, um, put in kind of a, what I would say is kind of a little bit of a difficult location inside because we're, that building, we're putting it on the interior of a corner. So there's some, um, logistics in getting this staircase built. Plus, you've got to air condition it, you've got to heat it, you've got to sprinkler it. So it's not like just building a, you know, a staircase on the outside of an apartment building that is like a fire escape. So there's some really, um, you know, plus it's a larger floor print of this staircase because of the volume that we have to be able to get kids in and out and students in and out of. It will take us eight months to build this. And that is about it, unless you have any specific questions.
Where does it face? What direction?
So, uh, this is the West Fork. And, um, if you're standing out on Henderson.
Does it, does it look at the street? Is that where?
No. So if you're standing out at Henderson and you're looking at the West Fork, it's, it's going to be the in, interior corner. And part of that was for some architectural, to ensure that we're keeping the architectural integrity of that building, so it doesn't look like a sore thumb that was just stuck on the building. So it'll be right sort of outside the, um, the fountain that's out there. And when it's done, you will not be able to know that it was an add-on.
So it's in the interior, in the courtyard area?
Interior courtyard. So you will not see that it is an add-on. No one would look at it and say, what did they do there?
In the high schools that we went to when we were growing up, we used to have a slide.
Slide. Or a, or a fire pole. Or a trampoline that you could jump to.
We had a four-story high school, it was a slide.
Well, I, I can tell you, I, um, you know, I did the same thing and said, oh my gosh, this is costing how much? So I've gotten, I've learned more about staircases than I ever wanted to know. But it will look beautiful and, um, it will serve its purpose for getting people out and in.
Call the question.
Uh, what, what about the, the ventilation for, for this? I know that's part of this, but.
Absolutely. It'll be, I mean, it's just going to be just like a, just like the interior staircase that we have now. Air-conditioned sprinkler, heated.
Okay. Is, would that, in case of a fire, would that be separate? I mean, okay.
See, she said it was sprinkled as well, has fire.
Fire protection in it.
Okay.
Any other questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 18, construction, consideration and approval of annual subscription renewal. Thank you, Ms. Petty.
Thank you.
Moving on here to Ms. Shelton. And thank all of Ms. Petty's team back there, always ready with the answers. Item number 18, consideration and approval of annual subscription renewal of Alma slash Primo software from Exlibris in the amount of $181,452.2. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Greenhill, seconded.
Seconded.
Mr. Heed. Ms. Shelton, welcome.
Thank you. There's nothing to say much about that. We have to have a license for use of the library. We have one of the best ones of all of the colleges in the metroplex and so I ask your approval.
Any questions of Ms. Shelton? Comments?
How long is the contract?
Oh.
Is that annual? This one is annual.
Okay.
Let me go back to this.
Ms. Shelton, you might pull that microphone a little closer to you. It's, it says approval of annual subscription. Okay.
Is it not where it needs to be?
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 19, consideration and approval of surveillance system license maintenance plan with preferred solutions in the amount of $113,986. Motion to approve? Ms. Yalom, Ms. Dr. Patrick, seconded by Mr. Heed. Ms. Shelton?
And again, for each, there are, there are video cameras that record and, and monitor and record surveillance cameras. And for each one of those cameras, we have to have a license. And this is what this does pay for, that license for that surve, cameras on the surveillance system.
Questions, comments?
And this is a three-year recommendation for a three-year contract.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 20, consideration and approval of Edmund Tom Plato courseware site license in the amount of $162,850. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Greenhill, seconded.
Seconded.
Dr. Morrison, Ms. Shelton?
This is a software that, uh, we use quite a bit in the continuing ed program and it has all the content areas. And as you see, the, the three-year subscription cost was $650,000. Dr. Gates would like for us to evaluate because it's not used as much for some of the other things, like the, the boot camps. So she liked for us to do a one-year contract, not, I'm saying enjoy it, but anyway. The academic affairs group would like for us to do a one-year contract so they can evaluate it and see if this is truly what they want for all, including the continuing ed.
So we're going to amend that amount and do it on the one-year basis rather than three-year?
It is one year. That, that part at the top, the 650, 50,000 is what it was if we kept on with the three-year subscription, which ends, which ended on the 31st. And so we're asking, rather than, it's typical to renew these for three years. Rather than renew it for three years, we want to do a one-year subscription so it can be evaluated, see if this is truly the software, best software for the curricula.
Other questions or comments?
I do have another question. Is it only, um, the option to extend for one year? Or you, could you do it on a month-to-month basis depending on the amount of time that, that, uh, Dr. Gates Black?
No, I, I've not worked with any, uh, any vendor that will let us do things on, on a monthly basis.
Just a, I'd ask. Okay. Thank you.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, item number 21, consideration and approval of purchase IBM solid-state drive array from Sirius Computer Solutions in the amount of $620,508.50. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Greenhill, seconded. Ms. Yalom. Ms. Shelton?
This is just, the ERP is our colleague, our administrative software system where all of our data is stored for administrative, financial, and student systems. And the current technology is an old technology. So what we're doing is, is moving from the old technologies to a solid-state technology. It makes what we do more efficient, uh, faster, more efficient. And if you think about, I think all of you all remember, uh, VHS tapes. You remember on the VHS tape, some of you may be too young, but most of you. On a VHS tape, you know, and, and this is the, the, the schema. On a VHS tape, you know, to get to where you want to get on the VHS tape, or retrieve where you want to, you could remember the number, but you still had to run up there to it and play it and maybe move back a little bit and all that. And on a DVD player, you know, you can pretty much go right where it is you want to go and... So that's, that's the kind of, of, of thing you need to think. So it just, it makes it more efficient and eventually we will, uh, we will transition all of them to solid-state. But that's what we're asking for and I know that's a lot. But if you notice, the, if we went to DIR, which is the state's, uh, list that we can buy off of without a lot of trouble, their cost for this would be a million dollars and buying it from Sirius is $620,000, $20,508.50. So we're saving almost $400,000 with this purchase request. So we would ask your approval.
Motion to approve? And a second, any discussion, questions of Ms. Shelton? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 22, consideration and approval of Elsevier Nursing Examination Preparation in the amount of $128,700. Motion to approve? Mr. Heed, seconded. Seconded. Dr. Morrison, Ms. Shelton?
And that's just, um, our students have to take exams. Each graduating class gets a guaranteed cost per student. And this would be for the, for the class that, that ends in 2018. So we, we have to do it and have to provide it. And this was the best, uh, best purchase price we could get.
Questions, comments? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? As I was driving in today to the campus, I received, uh, an email from Rita Parsons, our press release lady. And the headline is, "TCC Nursing Program Earns Full Re-accreditation."
Yay.
And the sub-headline. ACEN evaluators impressed by academic credentials of the TCC nursing faculty. And it goes on to say that we were awarded full accreditation. We're the only ACEN accredited associate degree program in Tarrant County and one of only three in Dallas-Fort Worth. And I'm sure all of you will find this on your computer when you get back to your desk. But we are very proud of our nursing program.
Thank you.
All right. Dr. Joy Gates Black. Item number 23, excuse me, consideration and approval of purchase of three computer numeric-controlled lays in the amount of $263,088. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Greenhill, seconded. Dr. Morrison. Dr. Black?
These CNC machines will be located, um, at our Opportunity Center. We currently have 13 machines now. And with the purchase of these, excuse me, with the purchase of these additional machines, we're able to serve 13 students per class. And with these additional machines, we'll be able to serve 18 students per class. Uh, right now, we offer CNC courses about six times a year. So that's about 30 additional students that we could serve at the Opportunity Center. And we're also exploring, uh, after hours, being able to offer the community the opportunity to come in and take these kinds of courses as well. So the potential for usage could increase to over 50 students a year through the purchase of these additional machines.
Questions? Comments?
Is there presently a backlog of students waiting for these?
There is a backlog of positions. Most of the CNC operators in business and industry are in their 50s. And so there is a need to identify and train, uh, people in CNC. And so there is a need for this kind of training. And we've been able to be limited by the number of, of machines that we have. But there is a demand.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 24, consideration and approval of novation cooperative agreement with Shimatsu Medical Systems, purchase of radiographic system with Konica Image Pilot LS-19 in the amount of $130,661. And I'm going to ask for a motion to approve from someone who understands what this is. Who would like to make that motion? Dr. Patrick will. Is there a second? Dr. Morrison. Dr. Black?
This radiologic equipment is replacing equipment that we have now that is over 16 years old. And as you can imagine, after 16 years, it's a lot to keep it going. It continues to break down and as it does, when it breaks down, we run the risk of not being able to have it available to serve our students and thereby interrupt their learning and, and not meet their learning outcomes. So the request is to purchase new equipment to replace the 16-year-old equipment.
Questions or comments? Call the question. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And item number 25, consideration and approval of purchase of seven Tarrant County College District Police Emergency Vehicles with radios and equipment in the amount of $366,000. Motion to approve?
Seconded.
Chief Williams, hello. And Assistant Chief Dietrich, welcome.
Hi. President Alpman, members of the board, Chancellor Robinson. The Police Department is requesting the purchase of seven new patrol vehicles to replace seven high maintenance units in our agent fleet. We currently operate with a total of 25 mark patrol units and security units. Thirteen of these old, uh, older Ford SUV units were purchased between 2003 and 2009. It's from these units that the majority of our mechanical and electrical failures occur. Our attempts to supplement the fleet with the purchase of one to three vehicles per year has been unsuccessful. Our older units are spending more time in the shop for repairs and the strain on our newest units has increased. newest units has increased. As a result, we are now seeing the same mechanical issues much earlier in the life of our newer vehicles than expected. Mechanical issues place our units down for weeks at a time, electrical failures even make it longer to identify and repair. We are working to establish a fleet rotation with the oldest and most problematic units on each campus to be replaced each year. And in addition, the regular patrol, in addition to the regular patrol units operational on the campuses, our offices are respected, are expected to respond to members of the special response team doing critical incidents, investigation units, victims' assistance units, and crime prevention units also use these vehicles to travel from the campuses to other locations. The approximate cost of the vehicles with emergency equipment is $52,285 per unit with a total cost of $366,000 for seven units. An ask for approval for the seven units.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Carter, is that you?
Yeah.
You used the word unsuccessful related to your efforts to, over time, replace these. Is that a funding issue? Is that something we need to look at?
Well, we were replacing them one to three units per year with our existing budget. The problem was with the fleet getting older and with more repairs having to be done, we, we couldn't keep up with the repairs of the older vehicles. So we replaced them, but the older vehicles, there weren't able to be the backups because we had, they were down for repairs so often. And sometimes, like I said, it could be anywhere from one to two weeks, sometimes even longer. We have to take the vehicles to the dealership to have them repaired.
What is the total count of our police force? I don't even know that number.
We have 83 sworn officers.
And how many cars do we?
25 cars. Twelve of them are the new police interceptors, which we're acting for now, but 13 of them are the older vehicles. And they were vehicles we, we started purchasing in 2003, from 2003 to 2009.
What, what typical mileage would these have before they're surveyed?
Really, mileage is really not the issue.
What's your measure?
Well, our measure is basically the amount of repairs we have to have. The vehicles run 24/7, and they always run 24/7, they're always out running. So even with low mileage on some of the cars, because they're operating 24/7, sometimes even low mileage cars will start having issues with them. So we, we look not so much just the year of the car, not so much just the mileage of the car, but the amount of maintenance we have to, to have on the car and how often that particular vehicle is down.
Does that come out of your budget or facilities? Who, who pays for the?
Right now, the one to three was coming out of our existing operating budgets, the police department.
The police department.
Yes, ma'am.
Chief Dietrich, do you have any additional comments?
Yeah, I would just add that repair and the maintenance does come out of facilities' budget, and, and they do a great job of working with us, the mechanics on the campus, but sometimes the problems are overwhelming and they end up having to go to the Ford house. And that's, that, he said two weeks he was being kind.
We've all been there, done that. Any questions?
Yes, Chief, could you elaborate a little bit on the difference in the vehicles far as the equipment that we would be able to get on these newer vehicles and how, you know, that, how that would help us in serving, you know, the campuses? And then also, second to that, if you could talk about what would happen with those others that would be put out to pasture, what, what's going to happen with those at that point?
Well, mainly, the, the new vehicles will, will purchase of the new police interceptors. Some of the older vehicles we purchased were just the basic Ford SUVs. The police interceptors, the new ones we buy with the police package come pre-wired. So all the equipment we have, the radios, the lights, sirens, everything else, the vehicles are pre-wired to hold that, that particular capacity. Some of the older vehicles we had were just the basic models, we had to have them wired. And because of that, we've had problems with them all along. So the new vehicles we have will actually be equipped to handle with the radio and all the other emergency equipment that we have to have on the vehicles. Some of the vehicles, out of the seven we will replace, some of them just, it's not really worth trying to repair. We have a vehicle now that's been in the shop for a while, we just got it back and has to go back again for repairs. So some of them are not worth keeping, but some of them that are will allow the security officers, our uniformed security officers, to have something on the campus to be able to drive around, not to leave the campus, because once again, I want to make sure that we have a safe and secure vehicle for the officers and security officers to drive when they leave the campus. But it could be something while they have, what they can use while they are on campus. As far as the units that we can't use anymore, we'll give them to the fire academy because they are able to use those vehicles for training as well.
Dr. Patrick?
Well, first of all, I want to say that I feel like you should have the emergency vehicles that you need, but I have a question about process. And since I'm new to this, if you'll forgive me, I know this has probably been vetted in previous meetings, but it's, you're requesting it as an emergency purchase. And so I was just curious about how it came to be an emergency as opposed to a regularly-scheduled type of maintenance.
One of the main things that we looked at, like I said, we replaced like one to three vehicles per year, and that was successful when we first started doing them, because we got about six vehicles when I first became chief about four years ago, four, five years ago. We were able to successfully replace two or three vehicles per year. Now, one of the constant things that I hear from the commanders on the campuses is that the vehicles are down all the time. When I go to a campus, that's one of the main things I hear from all the lieutenesses, our vehicles are down. We've put them down in the shop, they're, they're down again. So when I looked at, one of the main things that we needed, when I look at all the other emergencies that are happening throughout the nation, one of the things that I did, I went to all my commanders and asked them, what do we need to do to make sure that we're ready to respond to any critical situation within this district? The main answer for all, just about all of them was cars. We need to make sure that we have the cars, they able to function and able to respond to emergencies if we need to. So that's why I went to Chancellor Robinson, and I told, this is now an emergency issue because they've, I've been told that the, most of the vehicles we have now are inoperable. Only the, the newest vehicles that we have are the ones we can rely on to actually leave the campus and go to another location.
Thank you.
Yeah, another question regarding, I mean, if, if these vehicles were purchased in 2003, obviously, things have changed.
Yes.
Greater technology and so forth. Do these come with computers and how, how do, all the technology that you'll get with a new vehicle compare to what were in the old ones and, and how beneficial is that?
Well, the, we have a new computer system that was just approved as well, so computers will go on all the new cars. But like, some of the 2003 vehicles, they were just, some of them were the basic models, they weren't the actual police package. And so hopefully with the new vehicles, like the batteries dying and things like that, they'll be able to operate a lot better. And it would take some of the strain off the newer cars, because now, the newer cars are being used so often because we can use the older cars to, to replace those. So they are always down, so it's causing a lot, a lot more stress on the cars that we have, the 12 existing. So I'm hoping with the seven new, that will take some of the strain off the cars we're using now. But the technology has definitely changed, so hopefully they will last for us a lot longer than some of the other ones have.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Where does one buy a new police car?
Oh, where does one?
Are there dealers who specialize in those local?
Yes, ma'am. Byboard.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Herndon, you want to take that on?
We are purchasing it, using our approved purchasing method through the byboard consortium contract. Those cars were, and the equipment, were all competitively solicited by the Texas Association of School Board's byboard contract. So it was a competitive solicitation, and Sealsby, Sealsby Ford, I believe it was, has the cars, and then Wheeling is the dealer who will equip those vehicles, and all of that has been awarded through a competitively solicited contract. Okay?
Okay, thank you. Any other?
How soon do you expect to get delivery of those following this vote?
So 90 days.
Okay. Other questions? Dr. Ms. Yalom?
The, the, the older vehicles you're going to give to Dr. LeBlanc to burn, is that?
What you're using the fire academy.
Yes, going forward, Chief Williams, are we going to track what sort of repairs and things like that? Are you doing that today? So by model, are you actually tracking what sort of repairs we're doing and that type of thing now?
Yes, we are, because we also have six vehicles in the fleet, so I'll make sure we definitely track the, the repairs we have, that we're doing on the vehicles now.
We could be a little bit more proactive doing that.
Very much so.
Thank you.
All right. If there are no further questions, we have a motion, excuse me, on the floor with the second. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you again.
Thank you.
All right. Moving into the proposed operating budget for the coming year. Chancellor Robinson and team. Sneaking around back there.
Yeah, don't sneak out.
I'm retired, I can't.
I know. I'm retired.
No, I'm a dying Patrick Groupie who did not know the meeting started at 5:00.
Oh, so sorry. You missed all the hoopla, but you can catch us on live stream. Thank you for coming. Ms. Appleman? Thank you. Board members. First, I'm going to take you through the proposed operating budget, questions, comments, and discussion, and then I'm going to have certain items for consideration and approval, and then some resolutions. And I have been cautioned by Ms. Chang that I must go in a particular order by law. Chang Law.
She did give up her seat to Ms. Vandergriff for a few moments tonight.
So this first slide on proposed revenue summary should look very familiar to you. It's identical to the slide that I put up at the last board budget workshop. You'll see the first increase maintenance tax is $7,723,054. The credit hour tuition increase of $1,362,585. Community and industry education tuition funded, $350,000. A anticipated decrease in community and industry tuition non-funded. Anticipated decrease of rental income and other of $222,552, probably driven by the Radio Shack decrease. We're anticipating interest income of $400,000. And so you see we have a proposed revenue summary there. Oh, go back, excuse me, I forgot that line there. Building projects, tax revenue, we have another $7 million in there. So you see we have a total on the tax of the $7 million plus the $7,723,054. So total income of $16 million, go back, Shelly, I didn't have a memory, $16,513,087. Next slide. The maintenance and operation expenditures, we have it broken out in two forms for you. At the top, we have it broken out, one form, and then bottom by operation budget by type of expenditures, both equalling $9,513,087 on the increases, compared to increase last year of a little over $13 million. Budget summary, maintenance and operation, we're proposing, you see there, $343,377,301. Renewal and replacement, where that includes the fund balance transfer, as does the building fund, includes our fund balance transfer. Auxiliary is our food services and bookstore and such, for a total proposed budget of My recommendations, 3% salary increase for all employees. Next slide. I did a comparison for you of our percentage of salaries compared to our total M&amp;O budget, our maintenance and operation budget. And you can see there that Tarrant County College is one of the lowest comparative of what we spend on salaries compared to total M&amp;O budget. I don't have up there Lone Star in San Jacinto because we got this information from a website, and they didn't have the information that we could use for this slide on their websites. But all the, all the colleges that did have the information on their website, we got up there for you. So I give that to you by comparison. Recommendation, of course, no change in the tuition that you all had set, I think, last year, yes. We're recommending a decrease in the tax rate from .14950 to .14473, which is a decrease of .00477. Any questions on the proposed budget?
I'd like to make a note that I saw in this morning's Dallas Morning News that the Dallas Community College is proposing to increase its tax rates, and we're going down. So would you like to say it again, a decrease?
A decrease, yes. All right. Any other questions or comments?
I'm surprised that you rejoice in a decrease, Mr. Greenhill, but we...
What do you mean? I am rejoicing.
All right. On that note, I just want to, you know, once you go down, you can't automatically recoup it, but I'm glad to see that we're able to, that you've done an excellent job of planning with your team and that we can provide that decrease.
Thank you. At this time, I would ask that the board make a motion to approve the 2016, 2017 operation budget. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Greenhill, seconded by Mr. Heed. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You have your budget.
I would ask the board to make a motion to approve the 2016, 2017 salary schedule and 3% salary increase.
Motion to approve? So Mr. Heed, seconded by Mr. Greenhill. Questions, comments? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I would ask the court...
And I practiced that.
I would ask...
Will you approach the bench again?
Board to, for the authority for the chancellor to set individual salaries and to sign contracts.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Heed? Seconded by Mr. Carter. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes.
I would ask the board for the authority for the chancellor to establish community and industry education tuition and fees.
Motion to approve?
So moved. Second?
Mr. Carter, seconded by Mr. Greenhill. Discussion questions? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I would ask the board for a motion for consideration and approval for tax exemptions for certain disabled and senior citizens. Disabled veterans at 30%, $5,000. 50% disabled, $7,500. 70% disabled, $10,000. 100% disabled, $12,000. Other disabled persons, $3,000. Persons over age 65, $50,000.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Heed, seconded.
Second.
Dr. Patrick? Questions, discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I would ask the board for a motion for consideration and approval to lower the tax rate to .14473.
Motion to approve? Mr. Heed, seconded. Ms. Yalom? Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Now, the resolutions. I would ask the board to pass the following resolution, be it so ordered by the Board of Trustees of the Tarrant County College District, that the Tarrant County College budget for the fiscal year 2016, 2017, in the amount of $430,402,876 comprised of the following amounts. $343,377,301 for maintenance and operation. $54,652,412 for renewal and replacements. $28,313,163 for building fund. $4,060,000 for auxiliary enterprises be approved, and that a certified copy of the budget be filed with the state agencies as required by law, and that said budget be included by reference in its entirety as part of the minutes of this meeting.
Motion to approve? So moved. Dr. Morrison, seconded. Mr. Heed, any questions, comments? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I would ask the board to pass the following resolution, be it so ordered by the Board of Trustees of the Tarrant County College District, that all ad valorem tax exemptions comply with state law and are as follows. Disabled veterans, 30%, $5,000. 50%, $7,500. 70%, $10,000. 100%, $12,000. Other disabled persons, $3,000. Persons over age 65, $50,000.
Motion to approve? So moved. Ms. Yalom, seconded. Dr. Patrick? Questions, comments? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I would ask the board to pass the following resolution... I would ask the board to pass the following resolution, be it so ordered by the Board of Trustees of the Tarrant County College District that there will be levied for the year 2016 on all property owned within the boundaries of the Tarrant County College District on the first day of the current year, January 1st, 2016, except so much thereof as may be exempt by the Constitution of the United States and the laws of the state the following taxes. An ad valorem tax of and at the rate of 14.473 cents of the $100 cash value thereof estimated in the lawful currency of the United States for the support and maintenance of the Tarrant County College District.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Heed, seconded by Mr. Greenhill. Any questions, comments? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank all of you.
You know, since our acting chancellor has, I think it's four days, maybe five, six or seven, to remain in that position, I think we should give her a rousing vote of for her job with the budget. And thanks to all of her support team, too.
Mentally financial report. Dr. McLendon.
Good evening. We are in the 11th month of our fiscal year and so we will look at all revenues and expenses that are greater than 100%. Because 11 over 12 would be 92%, so we're rounding up to 100%. So we're going to look at total revenue, which is right now at 99.5%, which is expected. That's good. So we think that is a very promising figure. All right. We're going to look at also expenses. All right, let's go to expenses. Okay, we're going to look at expenses that are greater than 100% as mentioned, and I'll go slowly, we mentioned this. In September, we record all prepaid expenses appearing on 8/31/2015. This may cause some expenses to be larger than the consumption of one month. Prepaid expenses means that it has already been paid, but it benefits more than one period. Examples are softwares and insurances that encumbrances reflect a actual expenditure, but the period is greater than that period. So if you're looking at expenses, you may find a percentage, like on the first month, you could find a percentage of, say, 50%. So it would motivate you to ask that question and that is why that, that's the answer for that. For example, another example would be a lease, which covers a whole period of 12 months or something like that. If we look at the total expenses, our overall expenses are, go all the way now, please. Okay, our total expenses are, there, 89.5% versus 100%, but we still have a balance availability for August and year-end accruals. So we think that is, all right. Okay, so now we would like to move to our investment report. All right. Okay, so investments, we'll start beginning with our pools. Our beginning balance is $167 million. We had a decrease of $14 million and so we have an end-in balance of $153.7 million. There is no short-term interim for period for this time, there's no balance to report. If we look at our U.S. Agency Securities, we have a beginning balance of $121 million and we have an end-in balance of $121 million. All right? If we look at our total portfolio, we have a beginning balance of $289 million and we have an end-in balance of $275. And as mentioned above, we have a decrease of $13 million. All right? So if we look at our yield, our yield is through, this is at month-end and 7/31, is .8%. This compares favorably with a one-year T-bill, .56. So to arrive at 1.56 is, .80 minus .56 gives you .24%. If we look at our weighted average for the year, for this period, it's 377 days. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Mr. Heed says that's better.
Thank you, Dr. McLendon. Ms. Robinson?
We have some staff introductions. Ms. Shelton? Didn't mean to confuse you.
This is Jonathan Candary. Jonathan, stand up, you have to come. He's so wonderful. Jonathan is the Executive Director of Process Improvement and Projects, although most of the, all of the Fortune 500 and all of the Fortune 100 have process improvement people, black belts, master black belts. Not many colleges do and especially not many community colleges do. John brings more than 20, come up here. Jonathan brings more than 20 years of experience in process improvement, operations leadership, and project management. He's responsible for implementation of the lean program and establishment of the project management office that will serve the entire district. He started his career in process, he's very modest, too. He started his career in process improvement and projects in Japan where he was trained by Japanese experts in the fundamentals of lean production. He later joined a subcontractor for Motorola and was part of the initial implementation of the Six Sigma program. And any of you familiar with industry and continuous improvement are familiar with that. For more than 10 years, he's been involved in the employment of lean Six Sigma project management in various industries. Those include electronics, semiconductor, electrical, chemical, metal, plastics, and rubber, back office service operations, medical clinics, schools, federal contractors, IT and staffing organizations. Before joining TCC, Jonathan resided in Baltimore, Maryland, where he was an adjunct professor for the Lean and Quality Program at Community College of Baltimore College. During this time, he taught the lean program at the U.S. Coast Guard in Baltimore and he was also a quality certification program in Northrop Grumman in Baltimore. He has so many management system certifications that I'm not going to even go through them, there's a bunch of them. He has a Bachelor of Science in Electrical Engineering. He received his Masters in Electrical Engineering and Systems Engineering and graduate certification in project management from the University of Maryland. He brings not only a wealth of professional knowledge to the district, but he has a collaborative spirit and I've gotten feedback from everybody he's worked with that he, a lot of times people with project improvement come in and say, "We're going to do this." He's not like that. He comes in as a collaborator. Jonathan? Please help me welcome Jonathan Candary.
Good evening. I'm so passionate about improving processes using lean and Six Sigma methodologies. So I'm so glad to be here at TCC and indeed a great place to work. I'm looking forward to get to know all you and thank you so much.
Mr. Candary, you should know this board has escaped being trained in the lean system. So we may need to be your next victims.
Dr. LeBlanc?
Good evening, Mrs. Appleman, Mrs. Robinson, and board members. I am pleased to announce the appointment of Dr. Judith Gallagher as Vice President of Academic Affairs on the Northwest Campus. Dr. Gallagher's affiliation with Tarrant County College goes back to 1983 when she began teaching as an adjunct English instructor on the Northwest Campus. As a veteran English teacher, she has taught in public schools, a college prep academy, and at four-year institutions. She has served Tarrant County College as full-time faculty for over nine years, department chair for three years, and Dean of Humanities for 13 years. Previous to becoming an educator, Dr. Gallagher worked in business and industry. As an administrator, she has managed over 150 employees, managed budgets, consulted in facilities planning, and participated in many district endeavors. Recently, she wrote and continues to administer a $1.5 million grant for developmental and adult basic education funded by the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board. The grant involves strategies which lead to positive learning outcomes and student success. While her primary responsibilities have been in academics, she has always worked closely with student support services staff. For example, Dr. Gallagher was honored in 2012 to receive the first Celta Award for Support of Student Success. Dr. Gallagher holds a Doctor of Education in Higher Education Administration and Leadership from the University of North Texas, a Master of Arts and a Bachelor of Science in Secondary Education from Southeast Missouri State University. She has a proven track record of service to the Northwest Campus, is an excellent team player, and exhibits a positive approach to finding solutions and working with people. Please help me congratulate Dr. Gallagher.
Thank you very much. And I just want to share that this is what I've worked my whole career to achieve and so my dreams come true and now I look forward to serving the students at Northwest and helping out around the district wherever I can. Thank you all very much.
Congratulations.
I'm pleased to announce the appointment of Clint Grant as Vice President of Community and Industry Education on the Northwest Campus. Clint has been the Dean of Business, Technology, and Transportation on Northwest Campus. Programs include aviation maintenance, pilot training, business, computer science, information technology, and logistics. Prior to serving as dean, he was faculty and department chair of the Aviation Maintenance Technology Program. In his role as instructional leader, Clint added credit and non-credit programs needed by business and industry, updated curriculum to ensure the programs were relevant, and increased enrollments. Equally important, he has expanded with, expanded partnerships with the independent school districts in Tarrant County to include credit, dual, technical dual credit enrollment courses. Previous to joining Tarrant County College, Clint created and operated his own business. Clint is affiliated with several aviation organizations, including the Professional Aviation Maintenance Association, Aircraft Owners and Pilots Association, and Aviation Technology Education Council. His business experience has led to creating strategic partnerships and business, with business and industry. Clint holds a Master of Business degree in Administration and Business Finance from the University of North Texas and a Bachelor of Science degree in Aviation Technology from Embry-Riddle Air Nautical University. He, too, has a proven track record of service to the Northwest Campus, is an excellent team player, and exhibits a positive approach to finding solutions and working with people. Please help me congratulate Clint.
Clint Grant.
Well, thank you. I came to Tarrant County College strictly by accident. Kurt Landrum, our department chair at the time in aviation, thought maybe I could teach some aviation classes and 16 years later, Dr. LeBlanc keeps finding uses for me. So I thank her for her belief in me and I have to say I'm really excited to come to these board meetings. I just found out my, our air conditioner is going to get fixed and I'm getting a bunch of wore-out police cars, so I'm excited.
Only the best for you, Clint.
Pete Jordan. Dr. Jordan?
Good evening, Chancellor Robinson, Ms. Appleman, members of the board. Do you like my space outfit?
Very nice.
Yes, looking good. It's good to be here with you. It's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Dana Grove, Vice President for Academic Affairs for South Campus. Is he behind me?
Yes.
Prior to coming to TCC, Dr. Grove served as interim president at Metropolitan Community College in Kansas City, Missouri, and president of Morton College in the Chicago metropolitan area. At Morton, Dr. Grove was able to assist in negotiating with Illinois Governor Pat Quinn to grant the college 4.5 million in Illinois Jobs Now money to construct a 10-classroom facility. His passion for active learning as a proven strategy for guiding student learning and success led Dr. Grove to work with Morton faculty to redesign classrooms as learning studios that promoted cooperative and collaborative learning pedagogies. Before joining Morton, Dr. Grove spent five years as Vice President for Academic Services at Lincolnland Community College in Springfield, Illinois, and seven years as Executive Vice President at Johnson County Community College in Kansas City, Kansas. A definite Midwesterner. There, he had the distinction of serving as Johnson County Community College's representative to the League for Innovations Board of Directors. Dr. Grove started his career as a faculty member at Indian Hills Community College in Ottawa, Iowa, where he taught English and Humanities for 10 years. There, he rose through the ranks of Director of English and Humanities and Dean of Arts and Sciences before moving on to Lincolnland Community College. Among the many honors he has received and holds, Dr. Grove holds dear the University of Iowa's College of Education recognition of his teaching with their 1993 Distinguished Teacher of the Year Award. Dr. Grove earned a PhD, MA, and BS in English from Wall State University in Muncie, Indiana. He and his wife, Trin, have two grown sons, Anthony, without the H, and Orion. You're going to have to ask him to tell you about those names and where they came from. He enjoys jogging and he is an avid follower of sports. Please help me welcome to TCC and the South Campus, Dr. Dana Anthony Grove.
Thank you very much. It is a pleasure to be able to address the Board of Trustees of this outstanding institution and it is an outstanding institution. When I was looking for a job, I was thrilled at the thought of applying for a job at Tarrant County College because of its reputation, not only statewide, regionally, but nationally as well. Whenever I would go to conferences throughout my career, I would always attend presentations given by Tarrant County faculty and staff because they were always right on point, they were always top-notch and I knew that this was a great institution. When I came here for my interview, that reinforced the thought that this is the place that I wanted to be and of course, I was very, very excited when I was offered the position to come here. I've been here for two months now, I'm still learning names, I'm wading through a morass of acronyms at the college level and at the state level, but I think that I'm making progress there. And I do want to say that it is an honor for me to be able to work with Dr. Pete Jordan, who is one of the preeminent college presidents in the entire solar system. And he's wearing his spacesuit tonight. So thank you very much, I appreciate it.
You'll go far.
That ends the chancellor's report, Ms. Appleman.
Under the board president's report, I would call on fellow board member Greenhill to give us a brief summary of Texas Association of Community Colleges.
Rosalynn Gates and I have had an adventure in Galveston to the TAACC annual, I'm sorry, summer event. And mostly I was there to attend a meeting of the executive committee and leadership of the TAACC and the CCATT to discuss the political strategy. leadership of the TACC and the CCATT to discuss the political strategy, which we will be discussing thoroughly in the next, in the coming months. We went to some, a lot of sessions, and I got a great deal of information from the TACC. Mostly, it's becoming, getting to know the members of the TACC, and what a wonderful group it is of the professionals that we work with.
Thank you. Dr. Morrison?
Thank you. It was a great pleasure working with the wonderful staff at the Tarrant County College Opportunity Center, which is located off 820 and Rainey Avenue in the historic Stop Six neighborhood, and we had another successful year of a community engagement group that's called Breakfast with Our Elders. It recognizes seniors up to ninety-plus years old who have a rich legacy of education and service in the community, and we connect them with students from pre-K, elementary. We also had the scholar athletes from Dunbar High School, which was the football team there, and we had a rousing comment from one of our first-year students who completed her first year of high school and her first year of college at the South Campus, early college high school, and we later found out that she was elected to class president. So, it's a wonderful event. I want to thank all of the staff who work at the TCC Opportunity Center. You know, there are two tracks there, and they collaborated very well together. It's a wonderful community engagement event, and if you haven't been to the Community Resource Room, which is there at the center, open to the public with sixteen internet-connected computers, where members of the community can go and have access to on-the-job training and job applications, preparing resumes, and et cetera. So, it was a wonderful community event. Barbara Sanders was a celebrity guest, MC, and we had Barbara Caraway, who's a radio/tv personality, former state representative, and Sandy Joyce, editor of the LaVita News, were the celebrity presenters, and you can see we have beautiful photographs. Our chancellor came, brought some remarks, as did our Board President, as well as Ms. Ayala came and brought her mother, so it was a very inspirational event. Thank you all for your support, and if you weren't there, you missed it, but you can plan on coming next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gates, stand up. I had to drag it out of him, but he has been chosen as one of sixty participants across the state for the Governor's Executive Development Program. And it...[806.41][806.44](APPLAUSE). Only one other university person is in the group, A&amp;M, representing A&amp;M, and he is, and Mr. Gates is the only, community college representative, so we are very proud.[822.25][822.28](APPLAUSE). All right, we are going to go into closed session, and we do anticipate one vote when we return. Our deliberations will include real property, Section 551.072 Texas Government Code, deliberation on personnel matters, Section 551.074 Texas Government Code, and consultation with the attorney, Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code. Do we have a list of the proposed meetings for the coming year? We were going to put those on the screen. I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
You want to manage?
Yes, please. These, because everyone can go home if you want to, unless you're dying to know what we're going to vote on when we come back. These are the proposed meeting dates. Please note that in September, we're not meeting on the third Thursday, but on the fourth Thursday, and then the rest of the year is pretty much the third Thursday of the month, I think, every month.
It's until March.
March is different. And then, don't forget our breakfast on August 25th, 7:30 Arlington Convention Center. If there's no further business, we will recess at the closed session.
Mm-hmm.
Yes ma'am. Gotta have a quorum. They're slow. We gotta go watch.
Just because you're important.
I'll reconvene the meeting at 7:20 and I would ask Dr. Morrison to present a motion, please.
I move that the acting chancellor execute the fourth amendment to the lease for the property located at 13600 Heritage Parkway, commonly known as Heritage Commons for a term of two years.
Second to the motion, Mr. Heed. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. One negative vote, meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.